Let's go ahead and get seated. Get ready to start here this evening. I'm Dr. Newhart, interim superintendent of the St. Joseph School District. We do want to thank you for coming out this evening. Even though the Royals are on tonight, we will be giving you updated scores. We know you're here because you are sincerely interested and invested in the community and school district. We do have a specific agenda to follow this evening, mainly for time purposes, but we do encourage you and we do want you to speak freely and know that you have the opportunity to follow up as well. We do have a brief video for you to watch first. It's one that we showed to our new staff at the start of the year, and it's a brief glimpse of the school district today. Let's go ahead and show that video, get started, and then I'll talk further after the video is shown.
Welcome to the St. Joseph School District. We are glad you have decided to join our team. Our mission is to educate each child for success, and our goals this year include better communication in our staff and community, utilizing our resources carefully, and student achievement. We can reach these goals with you. Now let's take a closer look at the St. Joseph School District. The St. Joseph School District is the community's third-largest employer. We employ more than 1,600 people. Among those are certified staff and educational support staff. Each day, we educate more than 11,400 students. So how do we make that happen? The St. Joseph School District has approximately 1,000 degreed or professionally-certified staff in our district. Over 50% of those people have advanced degrees. Our other full-time employees include carpenters, computer technicians, counselors, building engineers, custodians, electricians, groundkeepers, nurses, and more. The St. Joseph School District is home to more than 30 buildings, which translate to 30 acres of roofs, 306 acres of grounds, and 2 million square feet of building space. In 2014, we added two new construction schools to our district, the first schools to open in St. Joseph in more than 40 years. We plow 470 linear miles of snow each time it snows, and we maintain more than 100 vehicles, buses, and tractors. We serve 3,200 students for breakfast and 8,000 students for lunch each day. Each of us has an important role to play, and each of us is responsible for building relationships with the students we serve. The more caring adults in a young person's life, the more likely that student will be successful. There are three goals that are very important to us. The first is to create a learning environment that will produce academic success for all students. The second is safety. We work to provide a safe environment for students and staff. And the third is to practice good stewardship of our resources. Our Board of Education has a 22-point priority checklist to help our district respond to the needs addressed in the recent state audit. This checklist will help keep the district transparent with day-to-day operations, allow for community feedback in partnership with our school community, and begin the healing and rebuilding process for our district. We are fortunate you are now part of the strength of our team that continues to meet the academic and social needs of our students. As you can see, we are a multifaceted organization, but while we are large, we still focus on the individual student and the individual employee. Welcome to a great learning organization. We are glad you have chosen to join our team. We are the St. Joseph School District, and we are a great place to learn.
As you've just heard the video, the St. Joseph School District does many things. But let's begin the conversation here tonight. This is a new start. So many things have changed since 2012, in the last year since the state audit, and in the last three months with changes in staff and administration. The community has changed and is in a different place. The district has made changes and is at a different place, a different stage. This process tonight is a start. We want to listen to you. We want to work with you to improve as a school district and as a community. This is a development of a comprehensive school improvement plan as the ultimate goal. Community-driven, Board of Education-approved, and we want your thoughts and input. The St. Joseph School District Board of Education has developed and unanimously approved, as mentioned in the video, a 22-point Board of Education priority checklist resulting from the state auditor report. And just recently, last week, we received a very positive follow-up report from the state auditor, and what has been completed in the direction the district is moving in from this 22-point Board of Education-approved plan. Basically, in the last three to five months, we've completed six of the 22 points. We'll complete Point 7 with the determination of healthcare coverage by November 1st. We've completed 2/3 of Point 14, and these checklists are on your table there. Point 13 will be ongoing with sale of surplus property and real property. On October 23rd and follow-up on November 9th with student achievement, 2/3 of Point 5. Completion of follow-up on Point 4, October 26th with the compensation study results. Point 9, overtime digital control process implemented in March of 2016. Current policies and enforcement of overtime procedures has began since July 5th. Adoption and policies and procedures implementation of Point 9, Point 19, 20, and 21, but are always going to be ongoing, have to be. Point 12, 15, 16, and 17 are in progress. And the most important point while we're here tonight is Point 22. Completion of a comprehensive school improvement plan. Community-driven, Board of Education-approved. This is where we need your help, to listen, to have the community, parents, and staff input, and move the district forward with a roadmap and direction in where the district and community wants and needs the school district to go. This is why we're here tonight, to provide this new beginning and the opportunity to listen, to hear parents, community members, concerns, questions, and input. We want this to be an open and free discussion. You'll have all kinds of opportunities in the next coming weeks and months as we do move forward. Nobody is being pressured into this, and I realize that you're all here on a voluntarily basis. We want to make sure we continue that process, and hopefully, energy will build in regards to that. We want to get this right, and we need your input to do that. With this in mind, I'll turn it over to Joey Austin for further direction, and we'll go ahead and get started.
Good evening. At this time, I'll have you take a look at the participant feedback form on your tables, and there should be plenty of pins. What we're going to do is, we're going to take 10 minutes, and if you need more time, we can certainly do that. There are five areas that we would like your feedback on, and feel free to, if you see an area that you really want to concentrate on, concentrate on that area. You don't have to fill out all five areas, but they're there because they're kind of a roadmap of what we want your feedback on. And they include student performance and learning, highly effective staff, resources, district finances, community engagement and climate, and governance, and leadership. And in that paragraph, the questions we'd like you to consider include, what would you like to see the SJSD keep doing? What would you like the SJSD to stop doing? What would you like the SJSD to do differently? And what are your expectations for students and staff? So I'm going to set my timer. We'll do 10 minutes. Take your time, and at the end of 10 minutes, I will ask you if you need any more time, and we will go from there. So at this time, what we'd like to do is, we're going to kind of get to know each other a little bit. If I could have you consolidate tables and have about six to seven people per table, what we're going to do is, go over some of the questions and comments you have in each category. We will have a moderator at the table taking that down so we can categorize what your concerns and questions and comments are. And then, after that time period, we'll do that for about 10 minutes, and after that time period, we will go into an open comment-question session. So if you could stand up and move to a table where we have about six, seven people, that would be great. Are we okay? Oh, I got a thumbs up back there. Are we good? Okay. So at this time, what we'd like to do is, I'm going to kind of go table to table, and would love to have your table kind of report out some things that your table concentrated on, maybe some areas that your table concentrated on, and we'll see if we come up with a theme or something that everyone, or it could be totally different. So let me see if I can get a spokesperson for the table. Moderator, Mr. Tim? Will you report any area? You don't have to stand up. Okay, now stand up.
Okay, I want to highlight just a few items that our table discussed regarding student performance. There's concern about block, they like the idea of blocked schedules. It's good for college prep. They would like to have full-time teachers. There's some concern that part-time teachers don't have the full engagement with students that they need. They were focusing on student achievement and wanting to know why the schools are below state national averages for performance. It seems like there's a lot of focus on some of the smaller subgroups and more of a focus on the students in the middle, not on the ends of the spectrum. And there was concern about the Advanced Placement Dual Credit and IB programs all pulling from the same pool of students.
Thank you. Okay, middle table, Ms. Denise.
Regarding student performance and learning, if we, I try to summarize what they most wanted the district to continue, and that would be strong basic math skills, a learning and understanding of history, and strong communication skills from our graduates. They would like to see the district stop allowing unnecessary cellphone use and technology in the class. Under highly effective staff, there was a lot of positives regarding that they believe change has been noticed and that people seem happier with the district, but they would like to see our administrators and teachers use common sense and to build trust with the public. Really, they have a lot of really good things. My best takeaway from this table was that they love this opportunity to provide input, but they would advise their friends and family, if you're going to give input, you should be willing to jump in there and help. And that's a synopsis of how that was put.
I do want everyone here to know that, if you could pass along to your friends and family who weren't able to be here tonight, that if you go to our website, which, one of our tabs is District Info, and then scroll to the bottom, it says SJSD Feedback Form, they can fill out this exact form that the participants did tonight and submit that, and so that can be added. So if you get home and you think of more things that you want to add, just go to our website, District Info, SJSD Feedback Form, and go ahead and send that to us.
Okay, in my group, anytime you want to jump in, please feel free to do so. We had a very active group. First point on student performance and learning was continue to try to make class size optimal. Rigor was an issue. Create higher after-school focus, or that focuses actually on academic performance. There is an increasing concern that students are not getting prepared, that the rigor just isn't there. Perhaps they're being prepared to take a test, but are they really learning how to think? There is also a focus on life skills was important. Also, in terms of figuring out how to educate each child for success, kind of at the same sentiment as the first table, looking at the ends of the, you know, a bell-shaped curve, we're kind of focusing on kids in the middle and perhaps not so much on the ends. And there was a discussion with regard to one of those ends being the gifted students and what kind of curriculum, what kind of rigorous curriculum is in place for them. So that was largely student performance and learning. One more component on that was really to engage the community caregivers to be involved. So we need to have more events like this and find ways to invite people to be more engaged in student learning and performance. In terms of highly effective staff, we want to keep highly effective staff. We want a pay scale and a package that helps engage them in ways in which they stay in our district, and at the same time, also enhance the ability to remove ineffective staff. In addition to those items, really effective approach to keeping people engaged, especially in regard to teachers, was that they feel appreciated for the job that they do. A positive from the group was that, you know, by and large, the school district teachers are a pretty good group. There, a lot of them are homegrown, and that appreciation is an important component to them being engaged in the school and staying there. In addition, high-quality principals were focused on, so the higher the quality of the principal, that can engage higher-quality teachers and maintain them and cause less turnover and set a culture. So that was an important piece to this particular group. In terms of resources, am I supposed to go over all four? Okay. In terms of resources and district finances, transparency was a key requirement of this group. A clear, concise budget was hugely important, even mentioning, you know, really being transparent on a daily basis. In addition to that, facilities were talked about in terms of how do we approach the old buildings versus contemplating new buildings, and that there should be a very strategic process for the school district to approach that so that there is a rational closing of schools, or at least a rational, consistent approach to how we decide to use those resources. Did I say it okay? And there is a concern about maintaining neighborhood schools, and that is a concern, you know, in juxtaposition to having new buildings. And so for community engagement and climate, PACT was considered a good process by this group. It was, it engaged folks, and prior to that, the phrase was, it was kind of a black hole. And another sentiment here was rebuilding trust takes time, don't give up. That was hugely important to this particular group. Let the community in, and we need more opportunities like this. And in addition to that, more room for actual involvement, even at the school level, volunteers. And it's hugely important as well that our community partners come alongside the school district. In terms of governance and leadership, that at times like this, in crisis, there can be a tendency to micromanage, and that is something that the group maybe should, you know, there should be a little bit of perspective on that. And then, in addition to that, that a task form could be formed, especially surrounding students transferring from the high schools to different high schools, and really focusing in on that in terms of leadership, the culture, and perhaps a task force could be formed to better understand that situation and improve it.
That was our list. Okay, Tim McKay.
All right, my group was pretty direct and short and to the point. Student performance and learning, more technology, keep up the technology, keep the computers coming in the rooms. Lack of textbooks was one of the, was also a concern of one of the parents. Also, I'd say a real, real big one is preparing the teachers in the district to use the technology, having somebody that bridges that gap between technology and how to integrate that into the classroom. That seems to be lacking. Highly effective staff, a real concern is that the board's making a mistake with messing with the insurance before the compensation study is back, as far as if that insurance is going to be raised for the employees, more money out of the employees' pockets. Performance appraisals need to be improved. Accountability for the tenured teachers that are poor-performing within the district, that needs to be improved. Resources and district finances, no sunset clause on the operating level, very clear on that one. Failed to roll, failed to change the proxy rollback, that needs to be addressed. Community engagement and climate, we'd like to see the board maybe do a Q&amp;A during the public comment section, re-engage the PACT plan, and have some ad hoc committees within the district. Governance and leadership, the board really needs to key in on getting a superintendent hired for full-time, and then work on policy.
Okay, Ms. Amy Todd, your report from your table.
We had a very busy table. I was typing furiously, so hopefully, I caught everything, but if I didn't, you can chime in or let me know. On student performance and learning, there were several areas that were of concern. One was to stop the unnecessary testing. Hold students accountable for any of the testing that's done, but stop the unnecessary testing. They'd like to see us add more practical art classes back into the middle school. Prepare the children to be successful for the community and not just looking at grade point averages. Prepare them to be successful. Hold students accountable and stop passing students along. Fund classroom resources fully. A couple of the areas that were mentioned were not having books for everyone, or not having enough of the technology available for all of the students. One of the comments was not to drop the Parents as Teachers Program. The early childhood program is laying the groundwork for our future. The music and arts was talked about a lot, and so they feel that that's very important, that there's not necessarily enough class time surrounding the music and arts. Stop teaching to the tests. Let teachers have more flexibility in the classroom teaching. So that's what they focused on, on the student performance and learning. And the highly effective staff want us to continue to hold on to good teachers. When raises are given, make sure that raises are done fairly and consistently, that there aren't perks and raises just given to administrators and not the rest of the staff. Continue with the transparency. Top-level people have the responsibility to let the public know that teachers, custodians had nothing to do with the issues that occurred, and they would like the top level in the district to make sure everybody understands that. Provide them with a good, safe workplace. Good benefit package. Keep a good benefit package and the good insurance plan that they have today, since we're not providing the higher salaries at this time. Let staff do their job and do not micromanage. School board needs to let them do their job. Would like to see good professional development with coaches in the school. Talk about getting, talk about getting, the district has talked about getting rid of coaches in the schools, and we can't afford to do this. We need the coaches in the schools every day, and this is the curriculum coaching. Help teachers with any new resources that may be available to them, more professional development. Quality of principals, quality of staff, principals need to be effective managers. So when we have a good-quality principal, it will equal a good-quality staff. We need to help them become better managers. Stop keeping the teachers that can't teach. Make changes when needed to staff. The next section is the resources and district finances. Again, when increases come, need to look across the board, make sure they're fair and consistent, not just the same people getting more and more raises. Compensate fairly. Review what resources that we do have available in the district. Evaluate what we have, make sure we're utilizing it, and evaluate what we need going forward. If they talk about school closings, make sure that we're really evaluating the impact of those closings. Understanding what community resources are available to the district, we need to make sure that we're understanding that. We spent money on a comp study. Make sure to not adjust it, that we're not adjusting those figures before they're presented, and be willing to look at it and address it. Don't cut compensation by cutting benefits. The amount it saves in the budget is small. Should not pick fights with staff over insurance. We have the reserves, focus on the resources and ways to pass a levy to get what we need going forward. They feel that there is too much focus, and the focus is on cutting to success. Again, Parents as Teachers is an important program. Do not cut and reduce the staff. The staff has jumped back and forth from full-time to part-time, and they're an amazing resource. Teachers spending too much money out of their own pockets to prepare classrooms. Money is there, and it should be reviewed, and the focus needs to shift. Community engagement and climate. In order to regain public trust, board and top administration should focus on the positives. This needs to happen in action and not just words. Listen and be willing to change based on public input. From this, are we going to change anything? What are we going to do from any of this input that we receive? Teachers and staff are part of this community as well. Focus on what teachers and staff are involved with. Remind everyone to be open and transparent. All open communication about any events that are ongoing, town hall meetings, any other community events. And then, on governance and leadership, schools cannot be ran like a manufacturing plant. They can't cut and squeeze. Stop focusing on your checklist. More town meetings, and make sure that everything is open to the public, the transparency. Main goal for students should be to become successful.
Thank you. Okay. Solen Haynes.
With student performance and learning, our table wanted to make sure that it is a top priority in the district, that we do keep the focus on student achievement, and that... that we do keep the focus on student achievement and that we stop classroom interruptions. We focus on staff and students, early childhood to high school. Help each student find their path to be successful in life, not just focus on the ones going to college, that other students can do things to be successful. For the highly effective staff, the recognition for the hard work that they do. Treat staff as professionals, pay attention to the class size and ratios. Also with the training, follow-up and implementation of PD with the staff training. Stop one-stop training. With resources and finances, keep being frugal, wise stewards with the money. Talk to all stakeholders before major decisions are made. Make public aware of what it costs to run a district. Decisions need to be made looking towards the future, big picture finances. Don't base decision on districts south of us that don't have the same demographics. And make sure the resources are equitable across the high schools. Community engagement and climate, make sure community knows that these are their schools. Do whatever it takes to get the community behind the district, the PAC process, reengage the groups. Also, a concern was the high school boundaries and recruitment and that the community needs to be a voice in their schools. Governance and leadership, the one we had was board needs to do their job and staff need to do their jobs, no micromanagement.
Okay, last table. Dr. Shindor?
Okay, for student performance, we talked about to reduce the amount of time being used for test prep and MAP testing, to look at ways to challenge the excelling students, the top half of the class, looking at ways to challenge them and providing resources that are appropriate. For example, Lexile books at the upper level that are appropriate for students. To look at increasing the amount of gate offerings at the elementary level. Currently it's just one day a week. More inclusion of students with disabilities into the regular classroom, finding ways to do that. Continued collaboration with teachers district-wide and more focus on student growth of skills and knowledge, not necessarily a test or the result of a test. And doing that by doing beginning tests, ending tests, and tracking kids in between that. For effective staff, teachers need to continue with learning on working with students with disabilities. We need training on that and continue collaboration and training among staff and across the district. Need to look at balancing the number of students in each building, talking about the student-teacher ratio and being a little more equitable about the number of kids that are in each class across the district when we have some classes that still have, some buildings that still have open rooms and some buildings that have overcrowding of students within a classroom and possibly look at using either open enrollment or redistricting to solve that. Need to look at more resources for students, like reading resources. Technology is being underutilized by our students, both in school and at home. We should find ways to better utilize the use of technology at home where parents can work with students using technology at home and have better access to our curriculum and to our resources at home. The board should not consider putting anything up for a vote at this time, asking for additional funding. Should continue to look for, seek parent input on committees and looking at things like advisory committees to help support this process.
Okay, and moderators, if you could do me a favor and the participants, you can keep the sheets that you filled out. And moderators, if you could put, make sure in your green folder that we have a copy, if you wrote it down, that we keep that. And also, collect the sign-in sheets at your table. So at this time, we would like to open it up for public comment, for questions from the audience. So just raise your hand and I will come over to you with the microphone. You're still in rain delay.
Was that basically saying? That's, that's right, I picked it up, I just want to make sure.
I'm going to give you the mic because we're taping and I want to make sure your comments are heard on, wave to John, but did you have something to say? No? Okay. Anybody have a comment? Yes?
I think listening to the people at our table, one of the things we wanted to clarify was when they heard, I want to say what they said, "I've heard that", and there needs to be a system where they can go to someone and say, "You know, I've heard that", and get the clarification on that issue. And it would be very helpful to them as taxpayers where they could say, well, then they could get the true story and it would clear up the whole issue.
Anyone else? Yes?
I would just like to say I can relate to the gifted program. My daughter has been in the gifted program for several years. And last year she told me she didn't want to do it this year, but they went in and they reevaluated and they made some changes. And this year she is in the eighth grade and she absolutely loves it again. She feels like she's being challenged all over again, so I think it's great.
Yes?
The comments about Parents as Teachers that came from me, I will confess. I would really, really like to see that program continue. It's been a benefit to our family, to our kids. Those people are wonderful people, they go out into the community and help people who would have no other resources about figuring out, you know, hey, what's going on with my kid? How can I better connect with my kid? How can I get better resources for my kid? I, I just, this program started, what, 25, 30 years ago in my home district back in St. Louis and started for a reason, because there's a need for it. And if we don't do something at the early childhood level and then keep that growing on through school, I mean, what's the point? We, that's the prime time of their life when they're becoming the humans that they are going to become. I just, I don't think the district should even consider cutting it.
We didn't hit on this in our group, I don't hear anyone else hit on it, but a few years back, there was an audit crisis among big companies in our country and they did something called Surbanocceley that redid the way audits were done. And one thing they made part of that was to add, that companies needed to add concerned hotlines. So when employees saw something not running right, they had the opportunity to, in a way, report that and have that addressed. And I know, your district is a huge district with lots of moving parts. I'm guessing that no one knows what's going on in the district any one given day, but sometimes people have true legitimate concerns. It'd be a huge undertaking to do because you don't want to get it clogged up with every little complaint someone has about the french fries being cold at school today. But when there's serious issues in a school, sometimes we need a way for either staff, maybe it starts with staff and maybe it can be expanded, but those issues being brought forward in a way that they can be addressed and be addressed in a reasonable way. And there's some models out there that large companies put in place to, for people to call in and in a confidential way, report things that are concerns in operations.
We also did just start an email that's feedback@sjsd, the, you know, @k12mo.us. So that email is available as well. And that's on the feedback form on our website. If you think of anything, you can send it to the feedback email and we'll, we will get it. Yes?
Sure. I work, I work for the YWCA and I work very closely with Parents as Teachers. Not only is Parents as Teachers, are they helping the kids that are coming into our kindergarten classes, but they're helping a lot of our teenagers that are in our schools who have babies. That's specifically what, what I work with. The curriculum we feel is so important that we too use that curriculum. So the girls are getting to see two people, two times a month, that teach them about the development of their child. They're teaching them that reading is important, they're teaching them what to be expecting during their development so they don't have expectations that are unreal. And in doing all of this and teaching these girls this, they're realizing that their education is important too. They're worried about their children and then they start worrying about themselves, which they weren't doing before they had this small child that they were caring for. So I think it's a good program as well.
Any other comments or questions? Yes?
I wanted to touch base on some of the things that were brought up by a variety of tables about life skills. I work in fast food and I work in several restaurants around town and I'm almost kind of a teacher myself to a lot of the high school students in the evenings. High school students make up a big majority of fast food restaurants. Most of them, it's their first job. And what we have been seeing here lately in the applicants is a big decline in basic skills. We have started doing actual basic testing, reading, writing, math, basic common sense. And it's alarming what these students don't know. They don't know how to make simple change. They don't know how to read back orders to people. They don't know how to write out basic availabilities. They don't know what they should know. And by the time they've reached junior, senior status in high school, there's no reason why a person can't figure out what the difference in change is between a $20 bill and a $10 bill. There's no reason why they shouldn't be able to ring in and read the word hamburger, cheeseburger. It becomes a struggle for us as employers because we end up becoming teachers ourselves and we find ourselves picking up where the school district leaves off. And so we're not only employers, but we're math teachers, we're spelling teachers, we're school counselors. We do a lot that the general public does not even realize. They just see us as, hey, we're going to go get some food tonight and that's it. But there is a lot behind it and I want to make sure the community knows that because we're teachers in disguise.
Okay, any final comments or questions before I turn it back over to Dr. Newhart?
My name's Bob Campbell. I agree with, with what several of you say, especially you. Reading is key. It doesn't matter what, what subject that you're going into. You have to be able to read, to be able to do math, you have to be able to read, to study any one of the subjects that are in these high schools, reading is the key. And I heard several of you talk about the levy, you know, whether we should or whether we shouldn't. This is just my opinion, you know, everybody's got one. First vote is going to be a no. I'll just tell you right now, the most people in this room will probably vote yes because we're here for the kids. We probably would vote yes, no matter what has happened in the St. Joe's School District. But I'm telling you, I'm in a lot of circles. A lot of people, and seven, eight out of 10, are going to vote no. It doesn't matter what you do, it doesn't matter what you put on these papers, what comes out, how much we fixed, your first vote is going to be a no. It is just going to be a no, that's my opinion. We need to get that on the ballot, get the no out of the way so we can start beating this yes down. We have to get to a yes and we got to deal with the no first before we can get to it. So I think we should put it on there, get it over with, and start working on getting to a yes. My opinion, thanks.
In schools, the students need to have their self-esteem and their confidence built up. And that way, they won't be following other leaders. They will step up and think more of themselves if they have self-confidence and self-esteem. This needs to be worked on all the time.
Yes, I just think what we need to do, I think in our schools today, we need to have, teach them more about social studies and my, social studies and government and because a lot of people don't even know who the president is, who was always watching, they don't, they don't know that. And I think they need to put, change that, change the curriculum. I think the board needs to do that and I think the board needs to work on, keep being on, getting kids on living along with the fast food. I see a lot of trash in the streets today, I see a lot of that. And I see that we need to change, we need to make sure that we get people, get involved in, in teaching them about the community. And we need to teach them about the community and volunteering and stuff like that. That's all important, of going to school, going, getting a job. And I just think that's part of the thing we need to do and thank you for your time.
Okay, anybody else? I'll turn it over to Dr. Newhart. Nope? Okay.
Wow, amazing process. And you are here because you're interested and you're invested in, in the kids of the district. And I do sincerely appreciate that. That's what we're all trying to get across and to make sure happens is that the community is engaged. We're trying to be as transparent as we can be, we need to build on this. We do not need to let this die, it just needs to get better. We need to take this information, we want to quantify it. Next Tuesday's meeting is going to be the same format. It is Tuesday, correct, 7 o'clock, at Carden Park. Same format, same questions to get additional, you know, input and feedback. One comment I heard earlier was maybe we need to offer free food, hot dogs and popcorn or something. Because we have to continue to get the engagement established and/or reestablished. And that's what we're trying to do. So we do appreciate you coming out this evening and we will work, some very, very great comments, very great concerns. We, we've got to absorb all this now. And we've got to put it together, we've got to place it into action. And this is what the CSIP plan needs to be. It needs to be that roadmap, that guide for the school district and what the community wants and desires. So having said that, again, I appreciate you coming this evening. If you do have any questions, any concerns, any comments, my- If you do have any questions, any concerns, any comments, my door is always open. I've really tried to make sure people understand that and know that, and I receive a lot of phone calls and emails every day, and it's just trying to work through it all, and we will get there. We will get there. Any last-minute questions or concerns or comments?
What is your point? Do you have any questions at all?
Basically, the board will be approving a timeline on Monday night. They were presented a timeline at last, the last board meeting, week and a half ago, and the discussion centered around it, a timeline for a aggressive plan to be through this process and continue this process, but have a CSET plan in place by January. Now, again, that's not been formally approved, but that was, we have some board members here. Correct me if I'm reiterating that correctly. Just want to make sure. So that's the timeline we would be on, and we will continue to build and have these meetings. We need to, we have to. Okay? Yes?
I heard it went to high school, it was a factor for three years, and had the excellent benefits for many years. And I hear this, the teachers, with their Cadillac insurance, and I would kind of, first of all, I don't really get to Cadillac insurance, and I would like to look at it as you guys being the quarterbacks at the top, and like a lot of teams, quarterbacks are willing to give up something, keep good players on the team. And I'd like to challenge y'all into having a Cadillac one, give them a Mercedes one, and quit trying to make them pay more. Give them better insurance with less pay. They shouldn't have to pay as much as they do for what I consider somewhat wrapped in insurance. And I'm just saying, a lot of football players do, quarterbacks will cut their pay, make sure some of the other players on the team got a good deal. I'm saying I need the administration to maybe take some cuts somewhere, make sure teachers keep their insurance, at least it looks at, if not, if approved.
Just for clarification, I've used that word Cadillac, okay? And from the Affordable Care Act definition, that rule is still being defined, and maybe what I would say, comparably to other districts, our size, our benefit package is a little bit better, okay? And that doesn't, you know, I agree with you. I throw, I get the same benefit package everybody else gets.
Yeah, but the pay is different. So you're comparing apples and oranges, but you're just doing it all. You can't say we're comparing this group with, you're not comparable to that group.
And point well taken. Point well taken. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Again, we like your feedback, appreciate you coming, and we'll let you get out here and get to a Royals game. Thank you very much.